Read in the court order, please rise for the Fledgled Allegiance. Fledgled Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Here.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
With the approval of the Journal, the meeting of August 16, 2016.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And opposed? I say that motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid openings. Move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, sixth district.
Uh, receiving file.
So ordered.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, sixth district.
Receiving file.
So ordered.
Item number four, seventh district.
Receiving file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, fourth district.
Receiving file and that will be the order.
We have nothing under road and bridge matters this evening, Mr. Chair, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
I receive file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number two and that will be the order.
Item number three?
Receiving file. Same motion for item number four and that will be the order.
Item number five, second district.
Receive file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number six?
Same motion for items six, seven, and eight and that will be the order.
Item number nine?
Uh, receive file and appointment be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I say that motion carries.
Item number ten?
Receive file and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and that will be the order. Benny Adams?
No, sir.
Uh, county executive not here. We're gonna move to the most special committees. We're gonna move to the public forum and we have quite a few speakers here this evening. Uh, we're gonna, so everybody can at least, uh, make a comment. We'd like to keep your comments to one minute. And, uh, before that, is Gail, is Gail in the audience? I'd like to have Gail come up, uh, who's with our planning department, and just kinda give us, just so everybody on this council and in the audience, give us a little brief history behind this proposal, if you don't mind. If you can just kinda keep it brief, please. Thank you.
Um, my name is Gail Shoad. I'm the acting director of planning. Um, as, as you may recall, based on taking a look at the Planning Commission report, this site was, uh, had, multi-family zoning was established on this property back in 2010 and 2011. The initial proposal that came to the Planning Commission was for 316 apartments for the elderly and 170-bed nursing home. Um, they, the proposal had a single multi-wing building and access was only on Bauer Road. Um, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project noting that the site was on a major arterial road, Tesson Ferry. It was at a signalized intersection and it really was consistent with the development pattern along Tesson Ferry, which was a combination of institutional uses, commercial uses, and multi-family development. Um, but with, in recommending approval, they included the requirement for a traffic study and to improve Bauer Road to, uh, two exit lanes onto Tesson Ferry Road. Um, the rezoning passed and the PU passed, but no development ever occurred after that. No site plans were filed, no Platts were subsequently submitted. Um, and then earlier this year in 2016, an amended plan was submitted for an amended PU specifically for 232 apartments, um, no age restrictions, not specifically for the elderly. And the two-acre corner piece was not included in the proposal, so 17 acres, pardon me, 232 apartments on 17 acres. Um, in this case, the units were two- and three-story buildings and three- and four-story buildings. The original proposal had been three- and four-story, uh, multi-wing building. Um, there were entrances, an entrance on Bauer and on Tesson Ferry in this instance. Um, the specifics of the proposal, it was, uh, they proposed a gated community. They had, um, some amenities, including a clubhouse and a pool. Um, the, as they stated at public hearing, half of the units were going to be one-bedroom, the other half were going to be two-bedroom units. Um, they had gated entrances. Both the entrance from Tesson Ferry and Bauer was a gated entrance. In this instance, they submitted a traffic study in advance, both to the county transportation department and the Missouri Transportation Department. Um, both entities of which reviewed the traffic study, uh, before the zoning was determined and they, uh, for the most part, agreed with the methodology and the findings. And those findings included improvements that were needed to accommodate the traffic. Um, two lanes from Bauer onto Tesson Ferry, some signal improvements at the intersection, um, improving Tesson Ferry with some lane, um, improving Tesson Ferry for right-turn lane both north of Bauer and south of Bauer. And then the county, uh, Transportation Department included improvements along Bauer, uh, for right-of-way pavement and sidewalks and shoulders. Um, again, the Planning Commission looked at the, the concept of, of multi-family at this location, even though the request really, the multi-family zoning had been established. They continued to find that, um, it was, uh, reasonable and consistent with the development pattern in the area. Um, specific conditions that they did add, um, in recommending approval, um, which they don't normally do, but they did state that specifically 232 apartments were recommended for approval. Any increase in that unit count would require going back for a new public hearing. They did include the height, um, recommendations that is proposed, the, the lesser height buildings, the two- and three-story buildings closest to the western edge and Bauer Road, um, were, that, those buildings were limited to two to three stories and then the buildings closest to Tesson Ferry were the three- and four-story buildings. Um, perimeter landscaping and interior landscaping was recommended to be increased and the wrought iron-like fencing was, that they had proposed along the perimeter was recommended as a condition, too. Um, the Planning Commission, again, found that this was reasonable and consistent with the development pattern in the area and they recommended approval.
Thank you, Gail.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a question for Gail?
We're gonna move on to the public hearing now.
Okay, I'll ask it later.
Thank you. I'll stay.
Thank you, Gail.
All right.
First speaker this evening is Mary Knight, who will be followed by Deana Fisher. Mr. Chair?
One minute, please.
Hi, Mary Knight, 5433 Keller Road. I chose to move to Keller Road over 30 years ago for the suburban feel of non-compact living where the majority of houses were on one-plus acre lots. It is a quiet neighborhood with deer and trees. This is not an instance of "not in my backyard," but one of preserving the sense of place and character of our community that we invested in financially and emotionally. This development will remove the majority of trees and green space and replace it with concrete, asphalt, and 400-plus cars. You have the authority to regulate land use and can put a stop to overdevelopment of land in our neighborhood. We would like to know from you how this development will improve our neighborhood and how it benefits the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Next speaker is Deana Fisher, followed by Philip Abraham.
I'm Deana Fisher and I'm speaking on behalf of the St. Louis Area Business Health Coalition in support of the Tobacco 21 Initiative. We would like to, um, show our support of raising the age limit for the sale of tobacco products to the age of 21. Our community has a significant opportunity to prevent the start of an unhealthy and addictive habit. A 2016 report by the Commonwealth Fund indicates that St. Louis ranks in the bottom half of U.S. communities for healthy lives. This is based on indicators such as number of smoking adults, poor health-related quality of life, and mortality rate from cancer. The entire workforce feels the burden of healthcare costs, lost productivity, and wages for tobacco-related health expenses. I encourage others in the business community to join the other leading 50, um, St. Louis community businesses at the St. Louis Area Business Health Coalition to really support a healthy future for the next generation of leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Deana.
Next speaker is Philip Abraham, followed by Michelle Lee.
My name is Philip Abraham. I'm a pediatrician at Wash U and PJC, two organizations out of many who actually support Tobacco 21 within our county. So Tobacco 21 is simple. The framework is that pretty much you just raise the age from 18 to 21 and, but in doing so, it really eliminates youth smoking. Seen a need, a message says we're a drop of 50% between the age, uh, years of 2006 and 2010. And additionally, um, there's strong support even from smokers. Seven out of 10 smokers actually know how addictive and destructive tobacco could be, so why not listen to them? So, do you know that within our region, we have some of the highest pediatric asthma rates within our coun, without our country? And when these children get admitted to our hospitals, their parents are the ones who actually have to go home and suffer economic losses from staying out of work and their kids suffer a lifetime-long, um, addiction. Smoking kills more people than alcohol, AIDS, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, suicides combined. And our children deserve to grow into adults who are free of addiction, to not lose their income, and not contribute to the $3 billion in tobacco-related illness in the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michelle Lee, followed by Matt Kepler.
My name is Michelle Lee. I'm a student at Rocket High School in the Rockwood School District and I'm here today to show support for the Tobacco 21 legislation. As a student, I see a lot of tobacco use in my schools, even though there's a really good and strict policy against in-school use. For example, in the second and third floor bathrooms of my school, it's often used as a place to go and vape and smoke e-cigarettes. Teachers are oblivious to this because they don't go inside student restrooms, but the, by the time teachers figure out about this, it's impossible to realize which student was actually smoking. So as students are beginning to smoke at ages of 13 or 14, this problem is starting to increase, especially with the easy access to tobacco products because they have a lot of friends who are 18-years-old, whether it's so they have class together, sports together, or other after-school clubs. So I think if we raise the age to 21, we can eliminate that social circle and that easy access to tobacco products, thus making it a safer environment for our 13- and 14-year-olds. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Next speaker is Matt Kepler, followed by Adam Mall.
Good evening. I'm Matt Kepler. I'm the Director of Government Relations for the March of Dimes. I'm here to express our support for raising the minimum age to purchase tobacco products to 21 here in St. Louis County. Nationwide, on average, one in every 10 pregnant women smokes. In Missouri, the startling figure is that 18 and 1/2% of mothers reported that they smoked during the last three months of pregnancy. For expecting mothers, tobacco use during pregnancy increases the risk of premature delivery and affects the fetal growth. In St. Louis County, one in every eight babies is born preterm. Failure to decrease the use of tobacco and environmental tobacco exposure will continue to cause poor health outcomes for mothers, infants, and children. Because of the majority of smoker, smokers beginning to use tobacco in their teenage years, this bill targets those under the age of 21 with the goal of decreasing the prevalence of use for those that are among the adolescent age range. The March of Dimes supports the local action. We ask for your support today to raise the minimum age to 21 here in St. Louis County. We look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Next speaker is Adam Mall, followed by Robert Schmidt.
Evening, Council. My name is Adam Mall. I'm the Executive Director with Missouri Smoke Free. We are a tobacco harm reduction organization. We're not, uh, opposed to raising the age of tobacco-smoking combustible cigarettes to the age of 21, but when it comes to vapor products, they are tobacco-free products, often nicotine-free products, and less than 1% of our youth even habitually use a vapor product. If you go to a vapor product store, you are ID'd at the age of 50 and these products help you quit smoking. The Public Health England and the Royal College of Physicians came to the conclusion that vapor products are at the very least 95% safer and they are responsible for reducing our youth smoking rate. From 2011 to 2015, we saw our youth smoking rate cut in half. When did vapor products become popular? 2011. They're already banned by our Missouri State Legislature and they were recently banned at age 18 to FDA. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam.
Next speaker is Robert Schmidt, followed by Laura Bayruth.
Councilmembers, following ADA law, you need to accommodate my communication needs. There is a lag time with sign language to English and one minute is not gonna accommodate those needs. It's impossible for me to communicate in one minute while a hearing person communicates, so please bear with me. Thank you. My name is Robert Schmidt. I live at 10058 Bauer Road, 63128. I am the father of a four-year-old who attends Hagaman Elementary School in Melville School District. Hagaman will be a designated school for all the children of elementary school age from the proposed apartment complex. I feel it is necessary to draw to the council's attention the serious overcrowding issue that currently exists in the Melville School District. The national average student-teacher ratio is 15, yet Melville School District is 18. Increasing class sizes makes it harder for teachers to individualize and adequately cater to the educational needs of their students. Hagaman Elementary is in the process of appointing a committee charged with rezoning to attempt to erase the overcrowding situation from neighboring schools. Just a little bit.
You're okay.
The state average spend per pupil, let me check this here, per pupil is $10,127, yet Melville School District only spends $8,574 per student, placing us firmly in the lowest echelons. Sadly, this means Melville is not a destination school district, especially given that the boundary from the top-rated Lindbergh District is only one street away on Schusler. And Lindbergh is always facing, is also facing its own issues of overcrowding and additional proposed apartment complexes. Just one more second.
You're fine. You're good. Take your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Further increases in taxation will be needed to meet the additional demands on an already overcrowded school district by introducing more high-density housing to an area already saturated with apartment complexes. It will only worsen the existing problems we are trying so desperately to address. It is adding water to the bucket that is already overflowing. Please make the right decision for us as our representatives by voting no to this proposed apartment complex. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Next speaker is Laura Bayruth, followed by Celeste Whitier.
Hello. My name is Laura Bayruth and I'm a physician scientist at Washington University. I'm here before you, though, as a citizen of St. Louis County and a mother of a 20-year-old daughter. What do I know? I know that smoking is a disorder that begins in childhood and I am in strong support of this Tobacco 21 because it will reduce nicotine dependence. Nicotine in cigarettes is the addictive substance. It is as addictive as heroin. What I also know is 90% of smokers every year want to quit, but only 4% are successful. I also know that not everyone is equally vulnerable to nicotine dependence. There are genetic underpinnings to these differences and we really need to protect all of our citizens. It is rare that we have the opportunity to save lives, but by raising this age, we will be saving lives and I hope you take that opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Next speaker is Celeste Whitier, followed by Queen P. Doherty.
Good evening, Celeste Whitson. Metaphorically, this is a county of 1 million and 20 people, but apparently only 20 of them count, developers who donate to campaigns. The rest of us are ignored by a lot of people on this dais. Mr. O'Leary, we're especially disappointed in you. We get hope for better, but instead we're getting the same old political behavior. Hopefully even you are somewhat ashamed of yourself by ignoring the voice of the constituents. You now have a fork in the road. Bravery or cowardice? We hope you choose bravery with regard to the Tesson Ferry Road project and what your constituents have begged of you, which is houses and villas. We really don't want you to look in the mirror for the next 30 years and say to yourself, "When it counted most, I caved." For the rest of us, it's become evident that these folks are not able to represent 1 million people and govern us efficiently and justly. They represent approximately 170 citizens each, which is bigger than most counties in Missouri. Many of us feel that the county's grown onerous and that it's time for new counties to be formed. We can do two, three, four, even five separate counties, which we would have our own executives and councils. The Kingdom of Clayton should end.
Thank you, Celeste.
Queen Doherty, followed by Katina Lewis.
If we keep the plodding down, we'll move this thing along a little bit quicker, please.
Ma'am, you're not Ms. Doherty, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is Ms. Doherty going to speak?
She's here, but I'm representing her.
Okay. And your name is?
Nicola Kea.
Can you spell that for me?
N-I-C-O-L-A. And last name's Kea, K-E-A. Until now? You told me, you told me to prepare a package for my home in Judge Permuter, so I did. Since the appeal court denied my appeals bond based on the wrong evidence, the clerk wrongfully submitted, I would like to see the judge impeached immediately. He is an alcoholic and a liar, so is his clerk. It is brought upon the court. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicola.
Next speaker is Katina Lewis, followed by Isora Liggins.
All right, next.
Tina?
Next speaker.
Isora? John Huck, followed by David Skare.
I think someone's coming down. Please, John. Mr. Huck? She's on her way. If you'd wait and sit down. Thank you.
My name is Isora Liggins, 5320 Permuter Road, Norman, D, Missouri. I stood before you last week, uh, making an inquiry and to getting some help to help me and several other African-Americans in our community get information regarding disability insurance matters that we've been having difficulties with. And, um, I haven't yet heard back from the council. I didn't know if anybody had a chance to review my package or not. I left it last week.
Who's your, who's your councilperson?
Um, we'll, we have it and we'll, we'll contact you. We will contact you. Oh, okay. And I, I really, we really need your help. And again, with this new, uh, racial and ethnic fairness committee established by the Supreme Court, uh, behind the DOJ report, it's important that we do get heard in the justice system because if we can't go there, we can't go anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be hearing from us tomorrow. We, I'll give you a call.
Next speaker is John Huck, followed by David Skare.
My name is John Huck. I present to have me. I own a couple of these six stores. I own in St. Louis County and Jefferson County. And, uh, you know, I know you look like the bad people up there asking you out, but you're proofing vapor and with cigarettes and vapor is not cigarettes. We have 18, 19-year-old kids coming to our store begging us to get off of cigarettes. They, uh, they vape 0% nicotine, so to say that these cigs are nicotine is wrong. It's wrong on so many levels. We, we get people off cigarettes every single day. The majority of our customers are probably 25 to 50 years old, but there are a few 18, 19-year-old kids that have been smoking cigarettes since they were 10 years old, 11 years old. So I, y'all need to take that into consideration when you put vapor products in with cigarettes.
Thank you, John.
Next speaker is David Skare, followed by Greg Porter.
My name is David Skare. I live at 1017 Schusler Road. I'm not doing that.
We can start him over.
I'm sure I'm gonna open it.
Okay.
The, the people have signed petitions, attended council meetings, commented on the traffic problems that already exist and the character of their neighborhood and a potential crime that follows apartment living. The Bauer 21 area is prime real estate and businesses on that acreage with egress on the frontage of Highway 21 matches the character of the area along Highway 21, Tesson Ferry. The county charter under section 2180, number 33, states that councils, one duty, one of the council's duties is to provide a county plan for the physical development of the county. It goes on to say, under the section, and I quote, "The plan will be based on studies of physical, socioeconomic, and government conditions and trends that shall be designed to assure and coordinate the development of the county to promote the general welfare and prosperity of its people." I would like to know, how does this plan promote the prosperity of the people in this neighborhood? This proposition is before you now and the opportunity to decide on who you represent, the voting tax-paying citizens of this county or the interests of developers. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Next speaker is, next speaker is Greg Porter, followed by Gregory Gamal.
Good evening, Greg Porter, our 6th Crookham Court, Warseton, 63033, Unincorporated, North St. Louis County. I'm the President and Secretary of the Pedoquod Force Residents Association and the Chairman of the North St. Louis County Problems Solving Committee. I'm here this evening in support of the residents in unincorporated South St. Louis County who are opposed to bill number 180, uh, which is a proposed 232 multi-family apartment development at Bauer and Tesson Ferry Roads. I'm opposed for the same reasons that have already been voiced by the residents in opposition, including increased traffic congestion, as well as the types of people and problems that are typically associated with the high density of apartments in a particular area. As you're aware, unincorporated North St. Louis County has seen more than its fair share of apartment complexes concentrated in a small area and the resulting problems that oversaturation has created. The documentary movie Spanish Lake tells the story very well. On behalf of the residents of unincorporated South St. Louis County, I encourage you to listen to the will of the people and to vote no on bill number 180. Remember, that's how elections are won and lost.
Gregory Gamal, followed by Bill Hogan.
How you doing? My name is Craig Gamble and I'm actually in Mrs. Wassinger's district, but I'm only a block away from this development. I'm not against the development or the jobs, but I would prefer a development like the one on Kitterly behind St. Anthony's. That, like St. Anthony's commercial and behind it, you have condos, villas, and homes built behind it. And it's better for the school district, better for the environment, and better for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Hogan, followed by Stephen Ticketchak.
Uh, I'm Bill Hogan. I live at 12497 Sunset Mills Lane and I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the apartment complex. Because of time limitations here tonight, I and the next nine speakers will speak as a group representing the home most affected by the proposal. We understand you plan to vote. We feel that you should hear a recap of all our points. We also feel that you should hear the voice of the people as it stands today in our neighborhood. I came here trying to explain to you that the normal process the county, county planning commission has for us to get a hearing before the council to fully vet our case didn't work for us. We only have 29, 21% of qualifying property is single-family. Most of the property is owned by the, the real estate investment companies and by, uh, General American Life Insurance Company, so we only have a small part, but we are affected the most by it. We came here to you because we seek your We came here to you because we seek your understanding and help. We came because of the power, you have the power to fix the bureaucratic system that's unfair and oppresses those who are supposed to help. You, especially Councilman O'Leary, have the power to fix this and give us a full county hearing, or, better yet, vote no against this tonight.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephen Ticketcheck, followed by Bill Corpecky.
Hello, my name is Stephen Ticketcheck, and I'm trustee of Saran Court. I'm sure you noticed last week at the council meeting that a number of our neighbors left after you modified the customary process and restricted our speaking time to only one minute. Our supporters found this not only rude and manipulative, but highly insulting. Could you not have taken the normal three minutes to listen to our concerns? What does that say about your consideration for us, your constituents? The proposed development will be a life-changing event in our community and our lives. What would you think if you had a major concern about your personal health, a life-changing event, went to your physician, and he tells you to talk about the issues and problems, but he only has a minute to listen to you? Would you have been offended and shocked at the point where you wouldn't have gone back? In comparison, this is how most of us view your willingness to listen to our concerns in only one minute. It appears obvious that the deck is stacked against us, especially when your time clock makes it nearly impossible for us to give you our rational and factual challenge within three minutes, let alone within the one-minute time constraint we are under now. It is clearly obvious that you are ignoring our call for help, and we are here once again asking for that help. Please, Mr. O'Leary, vote down this bill, or at least have a full council meeting on this matter and allow us to discuss our concerns.
Thank you, Stephen.
Mr. Corpecky will be followed by Bill Cramper.
My name is Bill Corpecky. I'm a trustee at Canterbury Farms subdivision. I live at 12805 Canterbury Farms Drive. Over the past few weeks, we had speakers come to you and express their concerns about the validity of your planning, people's assumptions that the property remains R6 in status. They questioned this when the conditions attached to the prior zoning change from R2 to R6 for the nursing home had not been met. When that change was done, Mr. Stanger was our councilman, and he promised us that these conditions would be followed in order to get our community's acceptance of it, and now the conditions are being totally ignored. Our people now feel that they were misled. They would never have agreed to the zoning change had this project been proposed rather than the nursing home. So they asked for Mr. O'Leary for a council hearing so this could be resolved. And what happens? You ignore their calls for help. So we are here today to urge the council as a whole to help, to help by voting no on the bill. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Next speaker is Bill Cramper. Mr. Cramper will be followed by Michael Doian.
Bill Cramper, 13486 Sunset Meadows, 63128. The traffic study that was talked about was paid for by BERA. Using flawed data, unrealistic assumptions, the study came to the conclusion traffic in the apartment complex would not be a problem. What else did you expect? Time prevents me from elucidating the multiple flaws. We have shown that with realistic assumptions, however, that this project will create unacceptable traffic jams for eastbound Bauer traffic during rush hour. I sent a seven-page letter to the Planning Commission on the traffic report. I was ignored. We talked with the St. Louis County Traffic Engineer about our concerns to no avail. It is obvious he had made only a token study of the report. Three MODOT engineers have reviewed the study, had no concerns. Bottom line, the county and MODOT have rubber stamped the report.
Thank you, Bill.
One minute.
No, you just had your one minute.
Hear this. Unless you accept what I'm telling you, when you vote on this proposal, you will have no credible evidence of what this is going to do to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Michael Doian, followed by Mark Richardson.
I'm Michael Doian. My wife and I have lived at 12878 Tammy K. Drive in Canterbury Farms for more than twenty-seven years. My neighbors have come to you literally begging for your action to preserve the safe, stable, single-family character of our neighborhood. We have addressed the geography and flavor of our neighborhood, the almost rural atmosphere, our narrow country roads, the neighbor-to-neighbor quality of our community, our stable and crime-free environment, the little-to-no crime rate in our community of single-family homes versus the much higher crime rate in South County apartment areas with their transient populations. We have invested in our homes and our community. We have worked to preserve our environment and our treasured wildlife, including the rare white squirrel. But we have not been given the necessary time to give you a full explanation of the irreversible danger from your decision. Once again, Mr. O'Leary, we have asked for a council hearing to present our case, but you ignore our call for help. So we ask the council here tonight to help us by stopping this development, or at least by giving us a hearing so that we can fully explain our concerns.
Thank you, Michael.
With respect, thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Richardson. Mr. Richardson will be followed by Tom Pelizzaro.
Hi, I'm Mark Richardson, 12860 Tammy K. Court, Tammy K. Drive. Our people have appealed to you to reject yet another building's apartment complex in South County, especially along Tesson Ferry Road. This area already has a disproportionate amount of apartments, existing and proposed. Why has South County become saddled with so many apartment complexes? We have apartment-to-household rates as high as twenty-six percent in some areas. Drive along Tesson Ferry Road, you will readily see that we already have too many apartments, too many apartment vacancies. You will see for rent signs just about every development. One of our speakers before the Planning Commission was an apartment complex owner in the area, and he fully detailed his vacancy situation at his complex. Our speakers expressed their concerns about overbuilding and the detrimental impact these developments have on property values in the established single-family home communities. We asked the council for a hearing, but you ignored our call for help.
Just one minute, Mr. Chair.
We ask you for one more time, please reject this development, or at least give us a hearing.
Thank you, Mark.
Next speaker is Tom Pelizzaro, followed by Susan Brockmeyer.
My name is Tom Pelizzaro. I've lived at 12822 Tammy K. Drive for twenty-seven and a half years. I'm about a five hour away from the entrance to the proposed development. Some of our speakers spoke about the disproportionate apartment impact on taxes supporting our communities. They found that the average apartment along Tesson Ferry Road pays only $619 in annual taxes, where the average single-family home in their subdivision pays nearly $4,500. They noted that apartments contribute only around $318 per year in taxes to the Melville School District, while our average single-family household contributes nearly $2,400. More apartments will further constrain the already tight budget of our school district. They also attempted to explain the impact the complex will have on the stability of our educational process. So we ask you to exercise great caution tonight and give thought to the long-term consequences of saddling our schools with more tax revenue challenges. We ask you to vote no tonight.
Next speaker is Susan Brockmeyer, followed by Cindy Lukey.
Hello, I'm Susan Brockmeyer. I live at 128 Tammy K. Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. Several of our speakers, including a U.S. government soil scientist, expressed great concern regarding soil and drainage impact both within the development and the surrounding areas. They noted the disastrous consequences being experienced along nearby Wells Road, where construction is taking place on a similar property with similar terrain. They cautioned that once done, the situation is almost always irreversible. Even the massive lawsuit at the Wells location will not change that. They questioned and would like to independently examine the data presented to the county by the developer and the government reviewers. They expressed great concern for the residents along Keller Road, where flooding now occurs from the stream exiting the property and crossing Keller Road. More pavement and buildings will geometrically amplify the difficulty our residents will experience. They have asked for a council hearing, but Mr. O'Leary has ignored their call for help. So we ask you tonight to resolve this by voting the bill down, or at the very least, give us a hearing to allow us to more completely understand this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Next speaker is Cindy Lukey, followed by Wendy Antelik.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Cindy Lukey. I live at 5133 Kemp Drive for twenty-two years. And what Mrs. Schout said about adding a lane, tweaking the signals, and adding some landscaping, I can assure you will not help the traffic problem on Tesson Ferry Road. Mr. O'Leary, Kevin, you stood in my home, you said you would listen to the people, you would vote for the people, but there's an elephant in the room. What's driving this? Is it campaign donations? Is it what the people want? Are we listening, Kevin? Are you listening? Because you won't even return our calls. The people, the groups, our neighborhood, we want you to listen to us. We want you to take all that into consideration. It's becoming us against them, where our society is becoming fragmented. We are spreading the political issue, the BERA issue, who's paying who, who's doing what. We don't want it there. You know why we don't want it there, Kevin.
Just one minute, Mr. Chair.
And we voted for you because you said you would listen to South County people.
Cindy, please address me.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, this is my first time here.
That's okay. And your time's up.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. We just want you to listen to us, please.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wendy Antelik. Mrs. Antelik, followed by Robert Schaefer.
Wendy Antelik, 10464 Store Hill Drive. I've lived in my home twenty-nine years. I live on three acres, and I have the best of both worlds. It's like living in the country, but I'm close to a hospital shopping and close proximity to a highway. Earlier, everyone said the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to focus on three key points. One, I pledge allegiance, I promise to be true. Two, and to the republic, a republic is a country where the people choose their representatives to make laws for them, and the government is for the people. Now, when the pledge is recited, it shows we are loyal American citizens who believe in the principles of democracy. Democracy comes from the Greek, ruled by the simple people. Abraham Lincoln said it best, "Democracy is a government of the people, by the people, and for the people." I would like to ask, was the Pledge of Allegiance just a futile exercise? Did anyone listen or understand those powerful words? Or did it fall on deaf ears? We are increasingly becoming a divided nation. We urge you to listen to your citizens. We ask that you preserve this small area of South County. This preservation is not just for the people standing before you today, but for our families, friends, and future generations. We would also urge you not to be machine politicians and not to be overly influenced by incentive, by outside forces such as J.H. BERA. Money and politics always make for a corrupt cocktail.
Thank you.
So to this end, I turn to a higher power, God. Please, let God guide us today in your decision that you honor our request to turn the development into homes. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, final speaker this evening is Robert Schaefer.
My name is Bob Schaefer. I live at 13349 Bonfire Drive, the Meadows subdivision at Quail Creek. I feel that the Tesson Ferry Road at Bauer is a dangerous intersection for an additional 232 or more cars making an entrance through Highway 21 from either Bauer or Tesson Ferry to go north or south on Tesson Ferry. The survey for traffic must have been at 2:00 a.m. We also feel you and the county, I was referring to Councilman O'Leary, not responding to what kind of community we wish to live in. We have plenty of apartments and strip malls, many empty. We now know why we have so many small cities in our counties. The residents have no control over what kind of neighborhood we want to live. We would have control if we had our own city. It looks as if Clayton can do what you want with South County. The traffic, you know, you think about the flood. When 21 was open and 44 was closed, we had so much traffic. It just, it was unbelievable. We have traffic now. I urge you to say no unto this, or at least give us a hearing. Thank you.
I didn't get a chance before. Can I make a statement? Can I ask a question of the chair?
Go ahead.
Can I ask that we have a committee of the whole on this zoning matter at a later date between now and final?
I'm not entertaining at this time.
So you're saying no?
Yeah.
Anybody else have an opinion?
Very none. Introduction of bills.
Bill Number 194, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $193,002.45 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for supportive services for residents of the Kathy J. Wyman Shelter, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 195, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $70,582.45 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Choices Drug and Alcohol Treatment Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 196, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with a lease of 2.75 acres of property, expired at St. Louis Airport by Lieber Spirit LLC, and terminating the lease and assignment agreement dated October 5, 2007, between St. Louis County and Lieber Spirit LLC. Bill Number 197, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with greater St. Louis County Fire Academy Incorporated for reimbursement of the cost of site improvements in connection with construction of a new burn tower. Bill Number 198, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Oates Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the Spanish Lake ADA Improvement Projects, AR-1676. Bill Number 199, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance amending Chapter 602 of Title VI, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, as amended in Title Public Health, by repealing and reenacting Sections 602.300, 602.310, 602.360, 602.361, 602.363, 602.364, 602.367, 602.369, and 602.370 pertaining to the licensing and sale of tobacco products, alternative nicotine products, and vapor products. Bill Number 200, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 204, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, as amended in retirement plans, by repealing and reenacting Sections 204.290 pertaining to reemployment after retirement. Bill Number 201, introduced by Councilmember Watzinger, an ordinance designating a portion of St. Louis County, Missouri, as a redevelopment area, approving the Fenton Logistics Park Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and the redevelopment project described therein, making findings related thereto, adopting tax increment financing with respect thereto, and authorizing certain actions by county officials. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Prefecting of bills.
Bill Number 8, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please. That will be the order.
Bill Number 180, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for perfect Bill Number 180.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's have it. Motion carries. Bill Number 180 is perfected.
Bill Number 181, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up and move for perfection of Bill Number 181. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Bill Number 181 is perfected.
Bill Number 182, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for perfection of Bill Number 182. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Bill Number 182 is perfected.
Bill Number 183, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up and move for perfection of Bill Number 183. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Bill Number 183 is perfected.
Bill Number 184, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 184. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one eighty-four is perfected.
Bill number one eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for the perfection of Bill number one eighty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one eighty-five is perfected.
Bill number one eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number one eighty-six. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one eighty-six is perfected.
Bill number one eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of Bill number one eighty-seven. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one eighty-seven is perfected.
Bill number one eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number one eighty-eight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one eighty-eight is perfected.
Bill number one eighty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Watzinger.
I move to perfect Bill number one eighty-nine.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one eighty-nine is perfected.
Bill number one ninety, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number one ninety.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one ninety is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-one, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number one ninety-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-one is perfected.
Mr. Chair, I'll abstain from that last one.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bill number one ninety-two, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number one ninety-two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-two is perfected.
Bill number one ninety-three, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of Bill number one ninety-three. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Motion carries. Bill number one ninety-three is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number one ninety-one, introduced, oh, did not do this.
Nope.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill number one seventy-six, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for final passage. Bill number one seventy-six. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Watzinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number one seventy-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one seventy-six is finally passed.
Bill number one seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for final passage. Bill number one seventy-seven. Perfection. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Watzinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number one seventy-seven, there are seven ayes.[1680.15]